Almost, T-Mobile says we got one more minute.
All right, I'll start the recording.
All right. It is seven o'clock. Welcome you all to the November seventh DeSoto City Council meeting. We'll start with roll call, please.
Here.
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 Everyone's present, Mayor.
Thank you. I would ask you all to rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Our first item tonight is our consent agenda. Tonight, we have the minutes of our council meeting of October seventeenth to approve and pay ordinance number eight sixty-five. Any discussions about the consent agenda? Or a motion?
I'll make a motion when we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Ritter.
Yes.
Daniels.
Yes.
Murdock.
Yes.
Thank you, Council. Motion.
Okay. Our next item is call to public. Members of the public are welcome to use this time to comment about any matter relating to city business not listed on tonight's agenda. The comments that are discussed under call to public may or may not be acted on by the council during this meeting. There's a four-minute time limit. Does anyone wish to address the council tonight? All right. Seeing none. We'll move on. Number three is our old business, which we have none, so we'll go to new business, number four. Item A, received twenty nineteen DeSoto Days report. Mike, you want to introduce our guest?
Yeah, I'll introduce our guest, um, his, his annual pilgrimage to give you the annual DeSoto Days report, Mr. Bob Zindler.
Oh, I need to.
I can, yeah.
But we need it.
We need it. Hold on, let me see, let me see if I can figure it out.
Sound guy's on it.
Sound guy.
No.
No. The public won't be able to hear you if we, if we don't have your mic going. You would, you would not be recorded well for, uh, austerity.
After extended.
All right.
What'd you do?
We had a switch.
Oh. Do I have to do a test now? Is that, you got it? Okay. So, who was I? Yeah, Bob Zindler, thirty-three, one eighty, uh, West Ninety-Fifth Street, DeSoto, Kansas, uh, treasurer for the DeSoto Days Festival. Uh, mayor, council, um, you've got most of the data in your packet, so I don't want to, you've got a long night, so I don't want to hold you up, but the rain uptown caused us this year to move the festival uptown, uh, down at the park. It was flooded, uh, Jay and the guys went down and tried to pump water out of it, and they did, but it was still too, uh, too soft a footing for the carnival. So, the decision was made to move it uptown and, uh, ended up with a very good festival. Uh, want to thank Mike, uh, uh, the, uh, Jay and Ron Creason and all their guys because we couldn't have done it without them. I mean, they were a big, big help and, uh, overall, I think it was received well. Uh, there were some businesses that were a little concerned upfront, the, the pizza shop, um, but I think he's ready for us to come back now. He sold a lot of pizza, so, uh, the bank, Great American Bank, they worked around it that Saturday morning pretty good and Friday, uh, too, so, um, basically, that's it. Uh, financially, you saw the report. I don't know, does anybody have any questions on it, or you want me to?
Just one question.
Yeah.
Shoot.
And it's probably more for the council than you, but, um, and I realize that you need starting money to have an event like this.
Yes.
But it seems to me that when there's, you know, fifteen thousand dollars sitting there, does it, did they give it? It seemed like in years past, they didn't put something with it. Is it used for scholarships or used for anything, or is it just fifteen thousand dollars sitting there waiting for the next event?
Usually, we gift some of it, like, back to the schools, uh, and we may do that yet this year. Uh, we usually give the band something because we want them in the parade. We usually give the cheerleader squad, you know, some things like that, which we haven't done, or at least we hadn't done as of.
The band would probably appreciate it since they're going.
Yeah, yes, yeah. So, that's, yeah, we usually spend that down. We like to have enough to initially do the festival if we could, you know, somewhat without any sponsors, so we've kind of kept that cash the same. You, did you see that on the, uh, report? We've kind of stayed about the same.
Yeah.
We're up now a little bit, uh, our sponsor activity was over and above what we anticipated, and, uh, even with the additional expenses, we had some cash left over, so.
Yeah, well, I mean, it's good. I just was wondering if you have like a, you know, okay, we need to have, you know, ten thousand, or ten, twelve thousand, or nine thousand, or eight thousand, and the rest is, because I, it seems like I remember in past years, years ago, that it was, you know, a lot of it was given back to.
Yes, yes, and we usually do that, and in fact, there's a category donations, and we haven't done anything yet this year, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Bob? It was a great event. I think it was well received myself. Um, I heard nothing but, uh, good about having it downtown.
That's what, that's what we heard. We had to get the generators.
Yeah.
And, uh, we had enough generators out there to, uh, we could have powered half the city. Uh, next time, uh, if you approve the permitting for next year, we will uh, power that back considerably. Yeah, we had, we had enough, uh, I think we had two hundred and fifty kilowatts or some, uh, it was tremendous amount, yeah, way more, and I went through and looked at what all the vendors, the food vendors are the ones. They want to show up here on Wednesday, and they need power through the whole festival to keep their stuff cold, you know, so nothing is perish, perishable stuff. So, we got to keep them running and, uh, but, uh, we had kind of guessed at it and, uh, uh, we do not need anywhere near that kind of power, so.
All right. Well, seeing none on that, then we'll move on to the next item, which is, don't go far, Bob.
No, I'm right here.
Consider temporary use noise and parade permits for the twenty twenty DeSoto Days Festival.
Yes.
All right, well, thank you, Council. I mean, Bob, you could probably do this if you'd like, you know, you can hop in and.
No, no.
Anyway, uh, just last, or a couple weeks ago, Bob stopped by and dropped off twenty twenty DeSoto Days application, which is about six months earlier than he has in the past, but, uh, so the, the days have been established. I, I think with the success of the, uh, festival downtown, they certainly wanted to keep it there. Uh, so we've accordingly, uh, made some changes to the, to the application, uh, to reflect a, a downtown show and, uh, festival. Um, everything is exactly as what you've typically seen in the past. Uh, there's going to be a lot of volunteers, do a lot of cleanup, um, city staff will be heavily involved, like we've been in the past. Um, I think the, obviously, the change downtown will keep the rain weather issue from being, um, part of the angst that goes on with all the activity that has, that crops up with the DeSoto Days Festival. There's also a noise permit and a parade per, permit in your packet. Uh, all fees have been paid, dates have been established, so we're ready to go.
Questions from council on the temporary use per, permit for the DeSoto Days Festival?
Just an observation that, that I didn't see in it, and I don't know how it plays into the permit, but comment I heard during, during the event this time, and I noticed myself, is on, uh, we and Shawnee, where people are walking to City Hall parking lot. Those are pretty dark streets, and can there be any temporary lighting, uh, put in for pedestrian activity, you know, during the time that the carnival is occurring, and would that need to be part of the permit?
Well, I don't know if it'd be part of the permit. I think that sort of would fall more on maybe city staff's job to find ways to provide safe, adequate.
Temporary lighting.
Yeah, and maybe even some additional barricades or something, um, or at least warn people around the alleys and things like that that, that might be cutting through, but I think that's something we can work on. I guess my concern is just, you know, you obviously need to have generators and all that kind of stuff for, for temporary lighting, so we'll, we can, we can just put our thinking caps on and see what we can come up with.
Yeah. The potential for, uh, now you're in front of somebody's house with a generator that's running.
Yeah, and lights, and lights.
Right, and a light that's not there, uh, so, something to explore.
Just thought.
Yep.
And, but I, but I didn't know if it was something we needed a permit for, so it, but if it can be worked out as just logistics, then that's fine.
Good point.
I'll make a motion, then we approve the temporary use permit, parade permit, and noise permit.
I'll say that.
All right.
We need to break out the temporary use permit because the mayor has to vote on that.
Okay. I'll just do, which one do I want to do? I'll do the temporary use permit first. Thanks, Lenny. Danny did.
Could I make a comment before you?
Sure. Any discussion of the motion? Yes, Bob, what would you like to say?
The, uh, fire department downtown. We, the carnival, had three more rides than what they put up. And we would like to go down in front of the fire department building. Now, I know there's a truck in there, and they've got to be able to respond, and we were wondering, uh, if, is it possible for them to relocate the truck during the festival? If you see on the map there, I showed the truck sitting out in front of Caugh's Coffee, uh.
Just coming from that, uh, I mean, coming from the fire.
Yeah, you know, sure.
You're relocating the folks as well, and all their equipment and everything that's in there, so that would be very tough for me to answer, but the board out there could probably answer that better than anybody.
Well, if they can't do it, you know, it was, it was a thought we had, because we're kind of, there's no other flat area to go to.
Well, I think it, it put us in kind of a bind. Have nothing else to be able to secure items. Well, we can talk about it, see what we can work out.
And it's a multiple day event. I mean, that seems like, if it's just a one-nighter, it would be a different story, but, you know, you know, every day, they have to check every piece of equipment, and you've got the boat that could be needing, and you don't have it out there, and it seems like there's got to be a better, a different way to go with the stuff.
I'll bring it up at our next meeting and see what we can do.
It was a thought we had. We just, we didn't know the logistics, you know, what you've got to do, you know, and to go through. I know you've got to be ready, and it's got to be ready to go, and equipment, everything.
Yeah, personnel sleeping there at night.
Okay. We can, we can look at another, maybe we can go a little bit further down Eighty-third Street. The hill starts to drop off, and the carnival wants, you know, the Ferris wheel doesn't work real well on a fifteen-degree angle, so, uh, so, but we'll, we can look at it and see.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion on the motion? Roll call, please.
Lane?
Yes.
Daniels?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Ritter?
Yes.
Murdock?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you, Council and Mayor. A motion here.
Okay.
All right, now I'll, I'll make a motion when we approve the parade permit and noise permit for the DeSoto Days event.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ritter?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
Daniels?
Yes.
Yes.
Murdock?
Yes.
Thank you, Council. Motion here.
Okay. Thank you, Bob.
Thanks, Bob.
Thank you. And if it's all right, I'm gonna go to church band practice. All right, if I can be excused, so, thank you very much, Council, Mayor. Yeah, well, yeah. Thank you.
All right. Item C, consider park board recommendations relating to park and recreation bond referendum.
Uh, yes, Council, um, tonight, you have a recommendation from the park board for, uh, three point two seven five million dollars worth of improvements that, um, were prioritized, discussed and prioritized by the park board at numerous meetings, really starting early in the spring, um, that followed the completion of the Parks and Rec master plan. What we charged the park board, uh, initially, when we, when we first, um, re, really reconvened those park board meetings last fall, they were charged with completing that master plan, which they did, and then also moving forward to prioritizing the capital improvements that are contained there um, in that document. So, that's really what we've been busy, um, and Jay and Justin, and we have two park board members here this evening, um, for input and feedback and discussion on this item, but obviously, um, any sort of approval authorization for any sort of vote, for any sort of bond, uh, referendum would, would have to come, uh, to the, uh, would have to come from the council. So, tonight, what we wanted to do is present the findings of that, uh, prioritization process, talk about the process for, uh, getting this out to vote. Um, and then, um, you know, maybe at, at a later meeting, if you will see in the calendar, we have another couple of meetings to discuss this before we have to decide whether or not to pass a resolution authorizing the referendum for a vote that could possibly occur in March of twenty twenty. So, um, if you'll remember from the master plan, it did have quite a list of potential, uh, capital improvements to existing parks. Um, had a recommendation for a new sports complex facility, and it also had, um, trail recommendations for rec paths throughout the community. So, those were kind of the three main areas of, of improvements that were recommended by the, by the plan. Um, trails were very, very, um, popular with the public input portion of that plan, so, you know, as a result of that, trails factor heavily into this recommendation from the park board. Of the three point two million dollars, about half of them, half of that money is trails. Um, so, on the staff report, I've broken down kind of that three point two million into several categories. Uh, the first would be signage improvements, just, just monument signs for each one of our city parks. The second one is improvements at Riverfest Park. And the third is improvements at Miller Park, so improvements to existing parks. Um, one point two million is slated for a new sports complex, and then trails at one point five, uh, million, so, um, there is Exhibit A to the staff report, I'll just buzz down there, has this spreadsheet on it that lines out those, those three point two million dollars worth of improvements. The far right columns there, that which are highlighted are the recommendations from the park board. Largely, these cost estimates are, are taken from the master plan, but some of them have been, um, the scopes have been crafted, and this, and the project estimates have been revised as a result of the discussions that take place at the park board meetings. Um, so, we could go through these line item by line item, um, you know, later on, the discussion, happy to do that. We do want to talk about the overall scope of that, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna go ahead and press on with the rest of the staff report for now. Just to kind of give you a feeling of where, uh, the whole process lies. Um, also, in your staff report, there's a map of the trails systems that ultimately were recommended, and this, this map's very busy. There's a lot of different colors on them, but the important one, or the thickest green lines here, um, these are the ones that are the one point five million dollar recommended by the park board, the segments there. So, there's a segment down Eighty-seventh, yeah, Eighty-seventh Street, um, out to Sunflower Road, and then along Sunflower from Eighty-seventh to One Hundred and Third Street. That's kind of the Western Loop segment. There's also a segment along Kill Creek Road from Ninety-Fifth all the way up to Eighty-third. And then, uh, the last really main part would be along the K-ten right-of-way from Kill Creek, where the county already has a, a trail network in place, uh, eastward up to Kill Creek Road. So, we're going from Kill Creek to Kill Creek, from the creek to the street. Um, so, that's one point five million dollars. The rest of that map, I kind of, I left in some of the busyness to kind of show some of the process that the park board went through in whittling down these, these lists of, you know, um, of trail, of possible trail locations throughout the city. So, that map is shown. We can talk about that, um, during the discussion period if we want. Um, there was some discussion at a couple of the meetings as we narrowed down, um, which trail segments to include in the bond, uh, as to whether or not to include all of them in the referendum question and in the funding for the referendum, uh, because most of those are along existing streets. So, when you're putting a rec path along an existing street, um, there's, um, we, we at least got comfortable that that didn't have to be approved by a voter referendum. We could, we, we could deem those as public improvements and issue bonds under the council's home rule authority for those without going up to a vote of the public. If we did that, then the bond referendum would be down to two point two million dollars, essentially. The park board ultimately decided that that wasn't the way we should go about it. Um, we should include all those in a, in a larger referendum, leave them all in, and at the, at the three point two million dollar level. Uh, in, in relation to the size of the impact on the mill levy of three point two million dollars worth of, of park board, or, or park improvements, we started discussing this in our capital improvement, uh, capital improvement plan update last year. You'll remember, we included a placeholder three million dollar referendum in the out years of the CIP. I think we broke it up into million dollar segments. But at that time, we asked our financial advisors, you know, can we do this? Because at the time, we had a nine million dollar CIP um, over the next five years, and, you know, their answer to that was yes. You know, it wouldn't overly burden the tax base, our bond, you know, the bonds would be marketable, our, our financial status is, is strong enough to support that. Um, so, since that time, we've taken a million dollars off of the CIP because we purchased an existing, um, public works building rather than building, that saved a million dollars in that. So, we're down to eight million dollars, and so, with the recommendation from the park board to three point two from three, doesn't make a material difference in that analysis. But I did want to show the impact to the mill levy, um, moving forward, so, um, if we're looking at a three point two seven million dollar park, uh, bond, initiated and, you know, the vote, you know, assuming a, a voter approval, and we initiate those bonds, uh, some of that, that debt would start to become due in twenty twenty-one. And so, what that would do to our mill levy is increase, and this is, um, you've seen this projection, this is a projection of the debt service fund, and this has come straight out of our existing twenty twenty budget. So, you can, I'm not sure what page it's on, but you'll find this, this chart in that, and it shows the impact of this bond, going from four point two to about six point five mils. Um, in, in that analysis, if we add a little bit more to that bond, uh, amount, uh, we're going to go from a, a mill of four point two to about six point seven five, so, we're looking at an increase of about two point five five mils on, on your tax. So, the, there is a table there on page three of the staff report that lays out what the impact to a homeowner might be of two point five mils. So, if your home value is two hundred thousand, um, your monthly increase is going to be four eighty-nine, your yearly increase is going to be fifty-eight sixty-five, and you could see I've got varying home values there, um, all the way up to six hundred thousand. So, you get a feel for what the impact to the taxpayer would be. Haven't done any of that on a commercial project, but it would be more because commercials value, the, the assessed portion, rather than being eleven point five, is twenty-five percent, so, it'd be a larger increase on the commercials, uh, properties. Uh, in terms of process, uh, we've got a calendar, so, working back, the, the county, I don't know if we've talked about it here with the council, we certainly have with the park board. Um, the counts, the county has set the, uh, mail-in ballots for next spring, uh, for March. March third, the ballots would go out to the voters, and they'd be due back on March twenty-fourth. So, working back from that March third date, we've concluded that the last date the council could pass a resolution authorizing this election would be at the December nineteenth meeting. So, we have a couple of meetings here that we can discuss this before we issue a re, resolution. The mailing ballot is going to cost about fourteen thousand dollars. It's about four dollars per registered voter. Um, we also discussed at the park board level, you know, just lightly, we discussed the referendum language, um, and Patrick prepared some, uh, general, you know, just a draft language. There's some tweaking that can be done in this, but not a whole lot. You know, most of these referendums, the language is relatively broad. Uh, you want it relatively concise, you want it, you want it short, you don't want it, you don't want it too long. Um, so, something similar to what you have written there in your staff report is going to be, um, probably where we'll land on that. So, um, if we, if we do that, then our calendar shows kind of a public information, not a campaign, but just a public information process that would start in January. And, um, we started that discussion with the, the park board in detail, uh, at our, at our meeting on, on Monday evening. Um, you know, it'll involve social media, it'll involve some open houses, some inserts into, into the, your utility bills, and some mailings. Um, and obviously, we can't campaign for or against the referendum, but we just, um, just getting the information to voters, so, you know, the referendum language doesn't tell you what we're doing, but the information we have certainly will. Um, you know, we want to be as specific as we can be about what we plan to do, and, and the priority for that, too. You know, if, if we issue three point two million dollars worth of bonds, we do want to prioritize those projects, you know, in the event that someone's come in over, over budget or over our expectations, and we can't fund everything. Uh, we want to get those high priority ones done first. So, that's kind of the next phase, the, of the park board's work. Um, and, um, yeah, so, so that's, that's where we stand right now. So, tonight, we didn't, we didn't provide a, a, a resolution authorizing the referendum. Um, we'll do that at a later meeting, but we wanted to have the discussion, and park board members are here to engage, um, as well, and, and Rick, I think, has attended every park board meeting we've had, so, he's well-versed in those discussions that we've had there. Um, yeah, I, I want to commend the park board. They've done a great job in, in getting through this, um, a very uh, logical process, you know, we, we thought, I think, we haven't, probably haven't thought of everything, but I think that process went well. Um, Jay and Justin also helping, helping us through that, so. That's where we stand. I'll stop there and, um, stand for any questions I have.
Well, I'd like to echo that and recognize Bill Miller, our chairman of our park board, and Josh Champlin, our vice chair now. Um, but we, we have been working on this for a number of months, and, uh, spent a lot of time, and, uh, a lot of thought went into this, so. Thank you, gentlemen, and thanks for being here tonight. So, they're here to help with any questions that we might have, so. We'll start off. Anybody want to have any questions, or?
Yeah, Mike, can you just refresh my mind on, um, is all the bond money done at one time, or is it spread out, and then at what point, over the next how many years, is it looking that this would be started, and how long it will take?
Um, with a referendum, you can spread the bond issues out, but I, you know, we'll, we'll probably have to get some advice from our financial advisors as to which, what's the smartest way to go about this, that. I had thought that all the money would be bonded at once, and, and you can do that as long as you have a reasonable expectation, you're going to be able to get all the projects done within three years. And so, that's been, uh, that's kind of what we've mimicked in the capital improvements plan. We kind of had a three-year implementation. Uh, there are, there are some of, some of these things on this, this list that could be done in twenty twenty, conceivably. You know, if we get the referendum approval in March, we bond it over the summer, we can do some installing, some play equipment. We can do some of that in twenty twenty. I would think the bulk of the work would be done in twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two. That was, that's general, and that calendar is also something that park will, we'll be working with the park board on. Before voters go to the polls, I think we'd like to have that, that answer.
Yeah, and I think showing the expediency, uh, you know, that, that this is going to be pursued quickly.
Yeah.
And that, that the citizens will be able to recognize the benefit from it. It'll be part of the information that we're, we're going to want to get out there.
If there was any impact on our debt service, uh, where we would on our borrowing capability or anything on debt with this bond?
Well, certainly, there's an impact, yeah, and we've run that through our, um, our bond count, our financial advisors. Um, yeah, there, there will be. You know, we, we do have a limit to how much we can borrow. Um, and three point two million dollars is going to, it'll chew into that limit. Um, but I think the, where we stand there on this, we're, we're comfortable that we can do that and still implement all of our capital improvements that we have on our list and still run the city. Now, it'll require a mill levy increase of two point five mils, but, um, yeah, this is, this is not without consequence, for sure.
But it won't, uh, necessarily degrade our credit worthiness or credit rating by taking on this additional debt.
So, that will not affect that whatsoever?
No.
Because we got some other unknown features like. Because we got some other unknown features like insurance coming up and other things that we don't have any idea where it's going to ride either.
Yeah, yeah. Well, it's great, good point, Mayor, and I'm sorry I missed that one, my answer, but yeah, our financial advisors are comfortable that the bond credit rating isn't likely to, to, to be negatively impacted by something like this.
So can I ask another question?
Certainly.
On the trail part of it, is it, are there other sources of income for the trail that we would be missing by having it in this, like grant money or funds from the state or county or anywhere else that could be pursued if they were on their own and not in here?
This, actually, this would put us in a better position to secure grants because we would have matching funds available, because none of those grants come without a match. And so we would have cash readily available to meet a match on a grant. Now, the timing wise, I don't, you know, like the, the transportation alternatives grants from, through KDOT and STP, they're, those are already programmed out, probably past the horizon we're looking at. I mean, we would have to probably slow down and, and try and apply for 20, we're probably looking like 2021 to 2022. Let me see, we're, they do it every two years. So they're, they're, they're programmed out through 2021. So it'll be 2022, 2023 funding that would be the next round.
So those would be better for other trails that we might add on in the future.
Yeah.
But even if you did do it, you could still use the money and get more trail money.
Yeah, I don't think we quit looking for grants just because we have.
Conceivably, we could, like Kill Creek, that's a cars route. These are legitimate transportation improvements on a cars route. We could make cars application on, so.
But we could always change, it wouldn't have to be these specific routes if a cars route and we said, okay, well, and, but that's going to be in four years instead.
Right.
Like what you were saying about it reaching out in the future or something that a grant would be available for these routes and not another one, we could change the plan after this is passed as to which exact trails we're going to do.
And that's a real good example of why you want the referendum language to be broad.
Okay.
Yeah, because you're really just shifting money around at that point. Like if you got SMAC money, which I assume, you know, that could be, their quality money could be applicable in some ways.
Some CMAC, yeah.
So if, if, if you can get that, then you really just are shifting the money around as to, you know, where you may be able to expand trail activity. But, but yeah, I mean, Rick's point that this gives us match money readily at hand. It puts us in a better position.
Well, and if the bond is specifically saying those routes, then you're stuck to those routes. But if it's vague enough, then you can shift them as long as it's still trails.
Yeah, so, you know, in our public information campaign, we'll, we're going to show this map, cleaned up simplified version of this map. You know, I, I think we should probably also articulate that, you know, we're going to leverage, we're going to leverage grants or other funding opportunities and these segments could change.
Well, just a couple of comments today with talking to people mainly about the election and so results and, okay, this is what I want you to do, blah, 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 blah. But I had a, a friend who came up to me and said, thank you so much for the shoulder on Kill Creek because it's somebody who uses that regularly. And I said, oh, well, you should watch the meeting tonight because you might like what is coming in the future. And so I kind of quickly described this to her, what you have on here. And they're like, oh yeah, we'd be 100% with supporting something like that. But the husband there is like, yeah, we would, but you're going to have a hard sell. So you've really got to be able to, you know, sell it. So I think that, you know, it's out there. But then, then the next lady that I was talking to about her big list of what she wanted us to do in DeSoto, and I was talking to her about this and she says, well, you know, the taxes are really high and blah, blah, blah. And so, you know, there's, she's like, you just got to make sure you don't, you know, overtax it because everybody, she's a realtor and taxes, people realize the taxes in DeSoto are high. So, you know, those are just the concerns. I mean, and I get, you know, this is going to be something and like Rick said, to be able to, or whoever it was, maybe it was Kevin, to be able to show that this is going to be done and the improvements that will be done in a short amount of time for your money is, I think, going to be big. There are, you know, a lot of people that this is, this is going to be really important for them. So, but it, you know, I think we're going to have our hands, our work cut out with us getting it. So everybody clearly understands what's going on with it, so.
The beauty of the referendum or the importance of the referendum is that it's a tax you put on yourselves. If the community, if it's important to the community, they will vote for it and then we'll go forward with it. If it's not, if we've misread, then we'll, we'll look at something else, but.
Yeah.
Danny, anything to add tonight on this?
Are we planning a couple of informational meetings, Mike?
Yeah.
Or public invitation meetings? That's what I'm trying to say.
Yeah, we, we started the discussion about the public information campaign at the park board and, and we still have to work on that a little bit, but Whitney does have a whole calendar lined out about, you know, and there is a couple of open houses. One will be at the park board meeting in February. Is that, is that February? That's right. Another possible one would be before a council meeting, later on that same month in February. Of course, March is the, March 3rd is, everybody will have their ballots by March 3rd. So yeah, there's some public meetings in that and we'll bring that, we'll bring that back to you at the next meet, maybe the next council meeting, we can give you some of those details there. Bill, do you have that in front of you?
I have open house Facebook.
Would you mind coming to the mic, Bill, so the viewing audience at home can hear you? Thank you.
Bill Miller, 9509 Corliss Court. I have open house, I'm not sure, open house Facebook event, is that on Facebook? I don't know. I have that on 1/20.
There's open house Facebook.
Admin.
Okay.
On this one, it says, provide the information through social media and printing, starting on a date in January.
All right.
Yeah, Whitney, Whitney has a very detailed plan laid out.
Then I have a real, maybe this is the real open house event on February the 20th.
Well, your park board meeting on the, in February though, the 3rd, right?
I think, February 3rd, there should be a.
I think there should be a open house on that.
Oh, I see it. Oh, and here it is over where it says meetings, under meetings. Open house park board meeting, February the 3rd, Chamber of Commerce, February the 13th, open house before city council meeting, February the 20th. So those were the proposed potential dates.
We'll bring, we'll get that in front of you at the next, at the next meeting, that plan, public, public information plan.
Thank you, Bill. Anything that you want to add while you're up there?
Well, one thing that I really wanted to say was thanks to the mayor for, he started attending, I think almost last October or so and has been at every one of our park board meetings, which has really made us feel validated. And then also to the staff, Jay and Justin, Mike, when, when you're on a community committee, a lot of times meeting to meeting, if they don't work really hard, we don't, nothing moves forward. But we move forward every single meeting because these guys worked in between, so appreciate that. We all do.
Thank you. Any more question or comments or questions from the council? So you, what's the thought then, what will we bring back next month?
Yeah, if, if everybody's comfortable.
We could bring a resolution back next month to talk about and then we can act on it if we're ready to, or we can refine it and move it because we will still have time to.
Yeah.
To fine tune it if we need to, so.
One question on the language, I know that's yet to be determined. It says, on sites owned by the city located at.
Yeah.
And all things necessary and incidental. Does that leave room for land acquisition?
It does. And that, that was, that's the other part of this. My hope is that, that by the end of this year, we have an option to purchase a specified piece of land that we're interested in and we could list that.
To where before.
We could list that there.
That would be.
Yeah, before any, before, yeah, right, right.
You know what you're buying when you're.
Right. And of course, we'd list the parks too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right.
Very good, thanks. Thank you, gentlemen, for coming tonight, Bill and Josh, appreciate it. All right, moving on. Item D, consider resolution adopting state regional mitigation plan.
Yeah, yeah, I'm going to turn this over to Steve Chick.
All right. Come on up, Steve.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. We have in front of you tonight on the agenda, the much awaited resolution for the regionale Kansas hazard mitigation plan. I wasn't able to verify it, but today at the county level, they should have approved it. And of course, you have in front of you tonight to approve it on the city level. Mike, bring up the first slide I gave you, would you please? I have just a couple of things I wanted to talk about that, I gave you a link, the document is hundreds of pages long and it involves both Johnson and Leavenworth and Windout Counties. And all of us had input in it, every city that desired to had input into it. And if you look on the, the very top here on the first table of Kansas regionale, one of the things that identifies utility failure, failure under power infrastructure and above ground and all that, that starts at the, the, the state level. And then the next one down, if you look again, they've got utility infrastructure failure. And I'm going to carry that into what we have too. Johnson County, for whatever reason, put in the utility failure, the need for us here with our sewer pumps. If we had a major power outage here, we'd have a problem because we're going to have to power, power each of those pumps. And rather than put it under the next slide, which I'm going to show you, the county moved it up to theirs because I think they saw that it was a potential. This table is what the city submitted under our hazard mitigation and I want to talk a little bit about what we're doing with that. The first two deal with the flood plain and soil erosion, and these are things that Mike works on all along. We keep them in the hazard mitigation program every time. The first item that I put in here was DeSoto 3, and again, that's purchasing and solar backup generator for the city hall and the emergency operating center here if we were to have a major incident. And as a part of that, we were able to apply for a FEMA grant last month for a generated $130,700 project for the DeSoto City Hall. They would fund 75 to our 25 match. So we'll know going into next year whether we're approved for the first cut on that. The advantage we have is twofold. One, both in the state and in the county mitigation, they recommend power for power outages. We put it in ours too. So it carries right on through. I think we've got a really good chance if the funding is, is going to be available, maybe to see that grant come through. Outdoor warning sirens are important as we go forward. We've improved ours right now. We have seven, six of those are the current version. The seventh one could go away anytime downtown. It's no longer supported. We put in here a current building code enforcement, which has a huge impact on mitigation from storm damage. And then of course, the emergency storm shelter, which we put in not knowing that we would at this point have the storm shelter already in the works. And I want to read just a little paragraph that I got from Dan Robison. It was an email. We were attending an ESF 11, Jay and I were this week out at the county for animal control during storm situations. And Dan Robison was talking to me about our proposal to activate the storm shelter with the sirens. And I got this email from him this morning. He says, also, I'd be interested to hear how the implementation of DeSoto shelter works. As I mentioned, it will be the first one in Johnson County we're aware of being established to address the needs of the larger community. While there used to be many of these established throughout the county, I think they all faded away due to some of the logistical concerns. I think your automation idea may solve a problem many may grapple with. And the county's really excited that we're going ahead with this activation, which I believe it was Kevin who brought it up in a meeting several months ago, could be tied to the warning signal and it's happening. We've ordered the equipment, it'll be here December, January, the locks here, the, the equipment to do it. But they're watching us because we're right on the cutting edge now as far as the shelter and shelter technology and where we've activated a community shelter. The county is now saying, hey, maybe it's possible with some of these other shelters that it can be possible to use them. Flip to that next slide, would you, Mike? He also sent me two different, these are kind of hard to see here and, and they're a little bit cut off. He didn't, didn't give me everything. It's interesting that FEMA recommends that the walking distance for a shelter be about a quarter mile or a five minute walk. And he went ahead and did some calculations for me and he said, there's 196 dwelling units with a population of 517 that could walk to city hall in that time for our shelter. And then of course, as far as the driving distance, it's a half mile. There's 617 dwellings with a potential for 1,491 people. So we could be inundated if they all came. I don't think they will. I think our capacity at 150 is probably reasonable. But the really cool thing is that, you know, we're on the leading edge and the county's watching what we're doing.
And that last diagram you showed picks up essentially all of the mobile home, not the, the one you were just on, Mike.
Right.
Yeah.
Right. And that's really our biggest risk right now. And some of the downtown areas, they, we have homes that are, are on crawl spaces, you know, the basement. So, you know, when you look at that in the, in the old town area, we're really going to provide the community, I think, a great service. The cameras, cameras are ordered and they will be installed a week of Thanksgiving down there. The other equipment, we're having a little bit of trouble with the emergency lighting, but Jay's working on that right now. And we'll, we'll have it up and running for the storm season.
I'll have something to show off at our March. I am hosting the Johnson County Council Mayor's here.
Yeah.
And I'm going to host them in the arts room downstairs.
Absolutely.
So I can show off our automated storm shelter.
You're going to do that when?
Uh, it's in March, so.
Okay, we'll be, we'll have our signage up, everything will be ready before then. I, I want to be ready by February 1st so that we get an early.
We don't have you come and just talk about this a little bit, that meeting.
Yeah, we'd be glad to.
Now, if you could get them to do a siren test to open the meeting, unlock the building.
Well, the interesting thing, I might throw this out at the same time, they're looking at a new matrix and I didn't want to wait because of our urgency to get the shelter up and operating. But coming next year and I'll, I've got an early memo on it, which hasn't even been released yet, but Blue Valley Public Safety is working on an early warning notification and it has to do with, with when the weather service issues advanced warnings. It's actually possible that we could activate this shelter before the sirens go off. And it'll be a whole different situation and we can, the doors can unlock from one to 10 hours. We've got it set up right now on a two hour. We'll see how that works. But there's a lot of new things coming with technology and we wouldn't have to trade out all of the new radio equipment and just have to have an upgrade done on it for several hundred dollars. So it's possible that after first year, I can bring something back to you and say, hey, here's another idea. So a lot of cool things happening. But the more, the important thing tonight is that we, we voted on the resolution to adopt the regionale plan.
Okay.
And that's required for us to get the grant money.
All right. Any questions for Steve before we, or a motion on the resolution, the resolution number?
The resolution number is 1-0-2-0.
All right. Go, go ahead. I'll make a motion, we approve resolution 1-0-2-0, adopting the regionale multi-hazard mitigation plan.
And I will second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All right, roll call, please.
Lane?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Ritter?
Yes.
Otto Michael?
Yes.
Hurdoff?
Yes.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you, Council.
Great job, Steve.
Good job.
All right. Item E. Consider agreement with Johnson County Watershed Organizations.
Yes, Council. You might remember in September, we had representatives from the Stormwater Management Division with the county came to us, gave a presentation on the county's efforts to reorganize, restructure the SMAC program. That's the one that issues funding throughout the county for flooding, flooding projects. DeSoto hasn't really ever been able to take advantage of any of those funds because we don't have properties in town that regularly flood. Their scoring matrix is such that if you're not mitigating a property damage or a loss of life, you're not gonna score too well. So this process has been going on for several years. They started with a master plan, really a strategic plan to decide organizational direction for that program. They've, one of the main recommendations of that strategic visioning was to approach these subjects on a drainage basin level, so that you don't have each city submitting their individual projects, but you have overall drainage basins that are prioritizing projects because these stormwater problems often cross jurisdictional boundaries, but don't usually cross drainage boundaries. So the first step in the process really is to establish these basin advisory committees, and there are six of them throughout the county. That's the map that's shown here. I think the best analogy I can give is this is sort of a planning commission to what might be a city council. So these advisory committees will, their first charge will be to implement basin drainage plans, essentially really in-depth studies about the hydraulics and hydrology of the basin, stormwater problems that might occur, and then an inventory of existing stormwater infrastructure that might be in danger of failure. So once those studies are done, then the basin advisory committees can work with their representative cities to establish projects, a protocol for submitting projects to the advisory committees, and then ultimately to the full stormwater program for funding. So this process will probably take another 12 months. So the first step in it are these kind of multi-jurisdictional agreements. And so we're involved with two of those. Watershed number five has, you can see us and the unincorporated area, and then Gardner is also included in that. And we're also in number six, and that includes us and Shawnee and Lenex and Overland Park and some of the unincorporated areas. So this kind of gets us a seat at that advisory table for the section, or the part of the process that'll involve implementing the watershed studies, kind of for the next year. Also during that time, we'll be making the group, I think countywide, we'll be establishing some bylaws for the groups and also for the overall organizational structure moving forward. Really having hammered out the procedures and processes and policies that will occur after the watershed studies are done, and we have prioritized projects that might get funded. That whole process has been discussed quite a bit, hasn't been essentially nailed down yet. So there will be another interlocal agreement, kind of a larger one at the end of about a year here, where all the cities in the county and the county will enter into and essentially establish sort of a new SMAC program. Patrick's had a look at the agreements and he's comfortable with them, so I recommend approval of both.
Are you our representative on these?
Yeah, we'll need to decide. Certainly I could serve. I've been involved all along and be happy to do that.
Other questions?
I'll make a motion. We approve the watershed organization agreements and authorize the mayor to sign them as presented.
Second. All right, we have a motion, a second, any discussion? Roll call please.
Yes.
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 Item F, consider bids for sidewalk improvements in the Timberlake subdivision.
Yes, Council. What you have here before you are some bids for some sidewalk improvements. This is just one subdivision, Timberlake, that our current really longstanding policy for sidewalks and residential subdivisions like this is you can construct the streets, but you don't construct the sidewalks until the houses are built. And the main philosophy behind that is because driveways take up a good portion of that sidewalk, you'd be tearing out a new sidewalk to put a driveway in, and some, you know, some other logistical grading issues that might come along with home construction. So that's been our practice for at least as long as I've been here, 20 years or so. Unfortunately, in the Timberlake subdivision, it looks like we have three segments of sidewalk that were overlooked during that process, just in administrative oversight, I believe. You can see why one of them happened here along Primrose. This is the backside of these double frontage lots along here, so it probably just got forgotten about. The one here along 84th Street, don't know why it wasn't installed. It was, you know, not along the front of the home, maybe they had something to do with it. And then there's another, just a really small segment up here along Timber Trails Drive, where it looks like, I think what happened was, there was some, AT&amp;T was doing some work back then and had the area torn up, and both the homes got put in, and this stretch never...
Can we get AT&amp;T to pay for that?
Probably not. I can ask if you want me to ask.
Tell them they tore that out.
We, Steve actually went and got three bids for this work. The low bidder was Montgomery Concrete of Bucyrus, Kansas. The amount was 563825, and we're asking for your approval on that. This process of installing sidewalks after the fact really isn't very well defined in our subdivision procedures, regulations right now, so we're working, started work with planning commission this month about revising, doing a text amendment to make that more clear. I think we'll end up with a process that requires a developer to submit a bond for a portion of sidewalk construction, 20%, 30%, 50%, something like that, so that if this happens in the future, that we have the bond to draw on to go out and do these improvements. In this case, it's been 10 years, and none of the adjacent owners are the original owners, so we don't feel like it's fair or warranted to go to the owners. Maybe we can go to AT&amp;T.
It looks like they're not going anywhere, though. They're sidewalks. Where do they go to?
Well, now...
I mean, they're not sidewalks...
If you'll come down Primrose, those are Cherokee Woods. And they're, the sidewalk on the south side of 84th is gonna tie into the new lot, and they'll all be a loop then.
It'll be continued, connected.
So where it doesn't look like there is one, there is now, or it will be when it's developed.
Those are platted lots.
Yeah, these are homes that are being built currently.
Sorry, this is...
And that's how the one on 84th Street happened. It was a sidewalk to nowhere. At that time, Cherokee Woods wasn't even, wasn't even a subdivision. So it was a sidewalk to nowhere, and the builder just didn't put it in.
Well, yeah, it does that way, but not south, but that's getting developed.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, these lots will, you know, eventually fill in.
And we will make sure that the sidewalks get built, so we don't have these chronic, lingering sidewalk problems.
Since 2005, the sidewalks gone in. We do not have a single, a single one that we have not put the sidewalk in, I promise you that.
Since when?
2005.
That's when Steve started.
That's when I started. These are all earlier than that.
Except out at...
Except out at... But that was my, by, the county, I put the first sidewalk in going in. I forced the builder to put it in, and they weren't very happy with me because it was a, it's a sidewalk to nowhere. So then they came in and of course, you gave them the grant to not build them.
That's ancient history.
Yeah, that's beyond us now.
Okay, any other questions? Discussion, motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion. We accept the low bid received from Montgomery Concrete in the amount of $5,638.25.
Second. Oh, you got it. This man named Kevin got the second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call please.
A piece of wood.
Yes.
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 Okay. Consider, item G, consider bids for landscaping at the water distribution building.
All right, Councils, you know, we had our grand opening for the water distribution building. However, we did not have our landscaping completed at that time. I was working on bids with a couple of companies. Actually, I sent out notices and only got two interested parties. One was Arbor Masters, the other was Rick's Lawn Care. And basically, there's a difference in price, and I'm recommending that we go with the higher recommendation. Arbor Masters, I talked to them on the phone, I sent them the plans, and they just very rudimentally, here's the price. They didn't, no thought anything other than here's trees, it matches your plan, here's the price, and we'll install them for this. With Rick's Lawn Care, Complete Lawn Care, actually spent some time with them. They actually came up with a design, had some suggestions, added some things on some areas where we thought we might need some edging, proposed that we mulch some of these planting beds, and actually provided a design for all the improvements as well. So with that, I think that extra effort and the additional variance in some of the plantings that they suggested warrants a slightly increase in the price for the project. However, certainly, the proposal from Arbor Masters meets our landscape requirements, and I'm perfectly happy going with that direction as well, but I thought it was something we should consider, certainly going with a little bit higher price and getting a little bit better product. If that all stands for any questions you may have.
First point I would like to make is I have no affiliation with Rick's Lawn Care. I'm not Rick.
Brad, I noticed that they're asking for a deposit, but they didn't give a dollar amount on it prior to...
Yeah, they've, with Rick's, they've, I mean, they're a smaller company. Arbor Masters is a large, I won't say truly conglomerate, but they're a company that doesn't need to have that type of upfront, but Rick's did mention that they would like to have at least some, and I don't know what that amount is.
So it's not $12,200?
No, it is not the entire amount, and I will make sure of that. But it's probably just to purchase the land materials and get some of those items upfront, at least the cost, not the labor cost, but we could certainly, if you wanted to put in your motion, that the upfront cost could be 20 more or 25%. I think we can work with that certainly.
I was just looking for it. I mean, it just was unusual that they didn't have some sort of percentage in there or something if they wanted it.
I would add also that Rick's has done a couple seeding jobs and things like that for the water department, so we have a bit of a relationship with them previously.
And this will get done this fall?
Yes.
Pretty soon.
Correct.
If we pass it, we approve it.
I know.
Okay, anyone else?
Well, I think we could get it done, so I'll make the motion. We approve the estimate with Rick's Lawn and Landscape.
We're gonna limit the deposit.
And the amount of $12,240 with an initial deposit of 25%. Not to say 25%.
All right.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, any discussion? Roll call please.
Yes.
Daniels?
Yes.
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 Thank you.
Okay. Item H. CIP discussion.
Yes, Council, just discussion item tonight. We'll go as long or as short as you wish with this. I think I discussed at the last couple council meetings, a desire to engage the public on our CIP update this year, starting this month. Before we do that, I wanted to just get the current plan in front of you, just to see if there's any material changes that you would like to see, additional projects or changes in project scope, before we roll out the public engagement process. I've provided quite a bit of information in the staff report. Most of this is reproduced from the capital improvement plan that we have on the city's website. You're familiar with this colorized table that's in Exhibit A, very difficult to see on the screen, so in our budget document, this for 2020, we included this, this kind of a verbal explanation of the five-year plan. The five-year plan that we currently have stops at 2024, so an update would include 2025. And I'm suggesting that, you know, rather than, because normally what we do is we would update from 2021 through 2025 for that five-year period, because the 2020 budget's already set. I think people are gonna want to include the 2020 program into that, even though the budget's set, you know, the county, you know, obviously doesn't, can elect not to spend those funds or can redirect those funds throughout the year. The roundabout design is in there, and I know that's gonna be a topic of discussion and concern for the community. So I think, I think we're gonna need to include that in, just in the discussion. So really, kind of, it's a six-year plan that we're gonna show the community. The other thing is, you know, like I said, for 2025, we don't have any projects programmed in there at this time. So in your packets, I've provided the, these project detail sheets for each project that's in the plan currently. So most of those are in the blue kind of theme there. And I've also provided some of the honorable mention projects that didn't get included in the plan, but ranked very highly. That's also in your packets. Those are in the orange, in the orange there, just as information to consider, we might want to include in a future, the future year or in a revised plan. There is an exhibit, I can't remember which exhibit it is, but I have this up on the screen there. It's kind of our master list of capital improvements that we've considered at one time or other, really in the last 10 or 15 years. All of these aren't detailed out on those detailed sheets, but we do have prices for most of them and a general description. So really, tonight, I didn't have anything other than just kind of a discussion, getting feedback from you all, if there's any major changes in the plan scope or fee, or how we go about things, just like to have a discussion about that. And then, you know, over the next two weeks, kind of develop that public engagement process that we want to go through, really start that toward, it'll probably be toward the end of November, where we really start engaging the public with it. So we'll have another council meeting, we can discuss just exactly the plan for that public engagement. Still want to finalize the five-year update before we really have to get into the meat of our budgeting next spring, so the plan is always is to kind of wrap up the five-year CIP update by the end of February, maybe into March would be okay with that as well. And in that time, we're gonna be updating the strategic plan as well, so I'll stop there.
Were you doing, I may have missed that, public meetings about the CIP at some point in there?
Haven't.
Do you have an idea if you're gonna do that and when you were thinking of doing that?
Yeah, I definitely, I think I want to. We did at the, when the, we did this initially in 2017. I do want to have public meetings, open houses, maybe by invitation, some public forums. Yeah, but I haven't, like I said, I think I want to formulate kind of that plan, get that in front of you at the next council meeting, so that you can all be aware. I know December's not the best time for that, so maybe it's a December-January engagement timeframe I'm thinking about.
Mike, just, so I understand that the only sewer expansion project that we've got that would be, that could be associated with future economic development pursuit opportunities is the 1 to 103rd and Edgerton, so it'd be basically that?
No, we have a 95th Street corridor as well.
Okay, where am I missing that? Give me a year. Oh, twenty-twenty-one.
Twenty-one there.
Okay, so we do have both, both of those areas.
Yeah.
And the Ninety-Fifth Street one approximate budget would extend how far west?
It, just, oh, the bu- oh, the, the, the improvements would extend more or less to about like Ninety-Fifth and Lexington.
Okay.
Go too much further than that.
Okay, thanks.
We don't have any downtown projects on the li- on the list. I don't even, did we have any of those even on our, uh, like, uh,
Honorable mention.
Yeah, there's a streetscape one on the honorable mention. Um, I think it's on page two, actually.
Yeah, honorable mention.
Sure, what it all, the print was kind of small and it's sideways, so I couldn't quite read it all very well.
Five hundred to one point four million. This is just that streetscape project that we'd initially, this is way back, two thousand and five or so, probably.
So that's probably something that could be re.
Something, I, I mean, with the additional activity of like DeSoto Days downtown, that, um, I know it may be time to think about something, maybe not as grand as that, but something that's, um, enhances the lighting or some, I mean, I don't wanna say.
Even if not as grand, there's still some phasing that can be done. There's some elements, you know, you could do the intersections, you, you know, you can, that plan could be broken up and done in a few chunks.
Do something there.
And looking at things that maybe could be done that would benefit DeSoto Days, um, in the long run. So, you know, you think about the electricity and the generators, or is it possible that it have power there where you wouldn't have to use generators? You know, make a difference there, you know, um, the lighting, the, you know, you still wanna be able to make it where you can set up the stuff in the streets, and so you don't really want, you don't wanna mess up some of the stuff that might make it a pretty little downtown. Well, then you can't have a festival there, right? So, you know, you gotta kind of think of what's really important to make it look better, and sometimes it's not spending a lot of money on, you know, the fancy little streets and trees, but just putting money into the front of the buildings and stuff, so.
I think that's a project that I think probably would merit some discussion, that, uh, but it's, we've got it in the honorable mention, so it would be something that would discuss. Another point I would make is that, uh, depending on what we do with the bond referendum, uh, the overall, I mean, I guess just considering the informational meetings for that and for this public engagement, that, uh, that might be challenging.
Yeah, we're gonna have to not confuse those two.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Right.
Do that. I don't know. I don't know, but.
Wait another year.
We got a person that's good at that.
Right, Doug.
Well, we could, I mean, that's, that's, we could wait another year on the public.
Do one of them, you know, this one, you know, you could, because, you know.
Because it's only seventeen, we did.
It's only been four, you know, you could, you could easily wait another year on that.
Absolutely, um, that's a really good idea.
I mean, it's probably, just instead of too much going on and too many confusions.
The only, really, I mean, the only reason that it raised my awareness was because of the roundabout.
And that.
That could be its own thing.
That independently. I mean, some communication could be, could be pushed out on that that's independent.
And it will have.
The CIP, yeah.
Well, is it, yeah, do we, we won't push this, push the CIP engagement then until fall of twenty-one?
I think pending what we're doing with the park referendum, I think so.
It would get confused, there's no doubt.
I agree.
At least it gets a full focus.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
So, so might I take a moment now and talk about an issue then that's pretty much kind of related to this here?
Sure.
So when we're looking at the future plans to, the, the, in the orange, so two of the things that come up, um, were the scale house issue, that was one of them, and the, um, the roads down to
Eighty-third.
The park, right?
Ottawa Street.
Ottawa Street, okay. So of course, that always gets me thinking about River Fest and the park and, you know, my passion of it. And so a lot of you have heard my, um, my ideas and, but I haven't really said this in front of public and in front of everybody, but I've had some conversation with the Friends of the Ca about, and I know you've all heard this, a, a type of discovery center, a river-type discovery center. And I bring that up now, because when I'm looking at that part with the, um, the scale house and putting money into redoing that, and maybe that'll never happen, and that's fine, but what the idea was with that when that got started was really based on my idea to get people to come to DeSoto to use that river more, and how do you do it? Well, have a place where they can get canoes here in town. And I think the city, we have always heard, even from Julia Lynn, that that river there is a big asset to us, you know, we talk about it all the time. And so an idea I have had for years now and have talked to multiple people, Daryl actually met with one person, is to have a center would, it would, which would basically be a place where you would learn about the river and all its influence on the state or on, you know, everything. A place for education, you know, it'd have a classroom, and, and just this goes on and on. So if you've ever been to the, um, the Wetlands one in, um, just off of Lawrence, that ba- or the Baker House, um, something similar to that. So I bring it up now only really because if I wanna continue pursuing this idea with Friends of the Ca, I need to know if that's something that the city would be of support of or not, because otherwise I'm gonna drop it and some other city will take it. So if you have heard or listened to them, um, all the way back to Manhattan, they're starting to do things along the river. Topeka, I haven't been over there, but they've done big retail type stuff. Manhattan is more done, um, trails. And so all along the river, all the way down, they're doing trails, they're doing retail, they're doing things. And so it's been my idea, okay, why not have that? Why not have the Friends of the Ca could have their office in it? So I bring that up because, you know, the next step for the Friends of the Ca, and if we as a city would choose to work with them, I'm not saying we would finance this thing, so don't get me wrong on that, but we may need to help in some ways if there's something that needs to be done. Maybe be willing to help with land, um, and looking at it, but it's something that the riverkeeper, the friends in the call would like to move forward, if it's something that the city would work with, that we could start looking at it. So the first, our first step would be to kind of put a proposal together, you know, find out if there's a place, how much it would cost, what, what we're looking at to do something like this, how is it gonna get financed? Um, but those type of things cost money, too. Um, and when I'm looking, what triggered my mind is when I'm going through here and saying, oh, we were gonna be willing at one point to spend fifty thousand dollars to redo a scale house, that, that's kind of silly, if you take that little piece of land right there, that, I don't know if it's even feasible there because of the, the flood zone. But fifty thousand dollars would help out in a plan to look at the feasibility of this and helping put this kind of a, you know, that's gonna cost money, as you engineers know, to just put that plan together and look at the feasibility and everything. So not that we need to have any kind of discussion about it in detail tonight, but I just want to have you all thinking about that. Is that something that you think the city would wanna work with someone to do this kind of a center that, in all in all, is meant to bring people to DeSoto to, um, to study and learn and to, and enjoy a place like that? And, you know, I stop at places like this everywhere I go. Maybe repeat, maybe a lot, not a lot of repeat of people coming, but I would imagine, um, you would have schools and activities and a lot of thing, people that would like to do something like that. So, um, I'm throwing that out kind of now, just so that, you know, if in the future, that, you know, we do wanna throw some things in as far as the sidewalks down there and stuff, there, you know, that would be really important, you know, to have, for being able to, you know, get down to, to the center, and maybe it's down there somewhere, maybe there's somewhere else in the city near the river that it could be at. But, um, just an idea that I kind of wanna get a feel from the council. Is this something that I should keep thinking about, or should I just like totally blink my mind out of it? Because I'm not gonna get any support from anybody in doing anything moving forward. And I don't need to have an answer tonight, but I'll keep coming back with you about my idea.
I think it's a fantastic idea.
And I actually have a little proposal about it that I'm just gonna, the, the, the first draft, what it's all about, that I'm just gonna hang. I've had this for a long time, and I've brought it to many meetings, and it's never been the appropriate time, I think. So I'll just let you guys each kind of take one and look at it, and it's just kind of what, there's a lot to do with it, but you have to, you know, like anything else, I always say, you gotta start. And if you don't start, and if I don't come to you, I can't keep talking to Don at the Friends of the Ca without knowing, um, what it would be and where it would go. So just ideas that maybe everybody could join in on now.
One of your biggest proponents would be Paul. Fifteen years ago, he said that that river was the biggest straw that DeSoto has ever had, and was a huge opportunity. And at that point, he was willing to talk to everybody he knows that travels up and down, fishes the river and all of that to help. So I bet he could twist his good arm and.
Yeah, yeah.
Lori, you brought this for the councils, like three, four years ago, the, when they moved the boats out of the.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that was an idea, and, and, yeah.
And they just let it lie. I'm with you a hundred percent on it. It needs to be done. I really would like to see the council take a hard look at this. We need to do this.
There's just a lot of opportunity with it, and, you know, I have a lot of really great ideas, and so does Don Bueller with the Friends of the Ca. I really see it more as not, I mean, the city's supporting it, but the Friends of the Ca probably doing the bulk, you know, a group, you know, it getting put together more by them doing most of the, you know, the, the work with it, but it, but it would require us to be able to say we wanna help somehow, you know. When, if you go to the Discovery Center, um, the Flint Hills Discovery Center in Manhattan, um, beautiful center, you know, mine is envisioned kind of a little bit smaller than that, obviously, but, you know, they worked with the city to get that done, and, um, you know, the city helped do a lot of that, but, but on top of that, there's gotta be, you know, I, I realize that there's funding to build this, which the one in, um, Lawrence, the Baker one was, you know, I think if I remember correctly, somewhere around three million dollars or something. But I realize that there has to be a way to fund the upkeep and everything of it, too. But that, I think, you know, between DeSoto and the Friends of the Ca, working together on something might be something that would be a possibility on, on that. But thank you for your time. I'm done.
All right, thanks, Lori. So we will move on. Executive session, we have none, I'm assuming?
None this evening?
That's correct. Uh, advisory reports, Mike, you wanna carry on?
Um, just that a reminder, City Hall will be closed on Monday for Veterans Day.
Okay.
And I have nothing else this evening.
Patrick?
Nothing for me.
Brad? Lana?
No, thank you.
Okay. Council comments. Kevin, would you like to start?
I have no report.
All right. Lori, you wanna add anything?
Well, now that I have the floor again, no, I'm good. Um, thank you again for letting me throw my spiel out, but I do wanna remind you, I will be out of the country for the next meeting.
Right, okay.
So keep it short, so I don't miss anything exciting.
All right, Rob?
Um, no. Good.
Kevin?
No, I know, Mayor, you were aware of a gentleman that brought the issue to our attention. Rob and I spoke with Mike earlier about that.
Yeah, I swear, so, all right. Danny?
Um, um, they've done a fine job of keeping the, uh, mowing and stuff done down, uh, on Cedar Creek, but we have a new problem that's been occurring there, reoccurring there, dumping. We get, uh, dumping down through there every once in a while, and I know the city has, uh, uh, keep, uh, uh, abreast of that, and I know they've removed the beds and the, and the mattresses and, uh, all that kind of stuff. We just had a recently, I've gotta send, I got pictures to send in to Mike now of another dummy. Seems like we're getting signs, but these were house paint stained deck signs from, actually from eight-one-six in, uh, Missouri, but they seem to find their way to Cedar Creek. So anyway, I'll bring that, uh, pictures over to Mike and get that done. But that's, everything else is getting good. It looks like I've heard some good news, uh, on the chips, uh, the granite sale, and, uh, some people said that that's good and, uh, sparkly.
It's different, yeah.
I don't know where, I guess that, that's the granite.
Yeah, it does have a, does have a sparkle to it.
Anyway, but, uh, good job there, so that's all I had, Mayor, thank you.
Okay. Um, so I guess I would ask Patrick, we are gonna have, have to have a swearing in of the re-elected, I'm assuming, right?
Yeah, so first meeting in December.
It will be the first meeting in December, so. Congratulate, uh, those folks on their elections, um, and I don't really have anything else, so.
I'll make a motion when you adjourn, second.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All pose, we are adjourned.
Water?
Drainage.
Oh, yeah, yeah.